I now call to order the York County Regular School Board meeting for November 22nd, 2021. Mr. Schaefer is unable to attend the meeting this evening, but he will be back next month for our work session and regular meeting as well. With Thanksgiving just a few days away, I hope everyone has had the opportunity to spend some time with extended family and friends, share food and laughter, and make new memories. And on behalf of the school board, we are grateful for the dedication and support of the YCSD families, students, teachers, and staff. The mission statement of York County Schools is to engage all students in acquiring the skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world. For our pledge of allegiance, I would like to share some information regarding our leader this evening, Xavier Ward, a 4th grade student from Waller Mill. Xavier is a natural-born leader, and many students in his class and grade level look up to him. He takes initiative in his own learning. He works hard to find strategies for overcoming challenging assignments. He is a team player, as you can see from his Cowboys mask, both in and out of the classroom. He plays football for the Williamsburg Hornets outside of school. Xavier knows how to have fun and joke around with his friends, but also understands when it is time to be serious and focus on the school-wide expectations. Current and previous teachers all agree that Xavier is a great student all around. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the Father, by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Xavier for leading us in that. Next, we'll move on to our recognition and awards. We have our seniors of the month, and the following students are being recognized for their achievements, and it is great to have them here with us. We will start with the Bruton High School Senior of the Month, and Ms. Garaltz will share.
Absolutely, thank you. Our Bruton High School Senior of the Month is Faith Lor. Faith, do you stand up? Have your family stand up. You don't have to come up front, just stand up right there if you say your family can stand.
Yeah, Mom and Dad can stand up too.
When you get to go first, that means everybody else has to follow yours. Bruton High School is proud to celebrate Faith as our November Senior of the Month. Faith is a compassionate and patient leader who always looks for ways to help others. She has participated in numerous clubs and activities in service to our school: student athletic leadership team, class officer, and Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Faith has earned the highest honors award each year and has earned a 4.51 grade point average. Faith is a student athlete and competes in swimming, cross-country, and indoor and outdoor track. She was honored as the 2019 Cross-Country Regional Champion. When Faith is not studying or participating in athletics at Bruton, she volunteers at the Jeremiah Project, fixing homes in West Virginia. She also volunteers at a local farm. We're excited for Faith's future endeavors as she plans to attend college to major in architecture, interior design, business, or agricultural sustainability. Congratulations, Faith.
Our Senior of the Month from Grafton last month in October was unable to be here, but he was able to be here this month, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Richardson to share about him.
Thank you very much. So, last month, October's Senior of the Month for Grafton High School is Ben Madrigal. I guess I'm saying it right. If his parents and him could stand up, please, Larry and Melissa, thank you. So, Ben is a Grafton High School's October Senior of the Month, and we're very excited for Ben to receive this award. Ben excels in both the classroom and the athletic competition. In the classroom, Ben challenges himself by taking many advanced AP-level courses. Ben has taken over a dozen advanced or AP-level courses and is currently enrolled in AP Government, AP English, Calculus, and Studio Art. With his rigorous schedule, Ben has maintained a 4.37 grade point average, which has him near the top of his class. Ben is currently a member of the National Irish Society, the National English Honor Society, and he is reviewing his college options for next year, and we all know will continue to thrive in the next stage of his academic career. Outside of the classroom, Ben enjoys painting, cooking, and exercise. He's a young man that can be counted on to do the right thing at all times, and he's a true leader. Ben is the team captain of the cross-country team. His self-motivation, work ethic, and love for the sport led him to becoming an individual state champion in track and field in the 3200-meter event. Ben has also received the award for the Virginia Peninsula Cross-Country Runner of the Year. Ben has proven through his academic abilities, his athletic talent, and his personal character to be a student who is worthy of this recognition. Ben is admired by his peers, looked up to by his teammates, and respected by his teachers and the administration. I know that high school is just the start for Ben, and we're all excited to see which university he chooses to attend as he pursues a degree in nutrition and physical therapy. Ben is an amazing student-athlete and very worthy of this award, and we are glad to name him Grafton High's Senior of the Month for October. Congratulations.
The November Senior of the Month from Grafton High School is Talia Anderson, but she is unable to be here today because of previous commitments, so we will read about her in December. So, we'll go ahead and move on to TAB High School. Mr. Myatt.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm delighted to introduce TAB High School Senior of the Month for November, Taryn Gupta. And I'd also like to congratulate his parents, Dr. and Mrs. Gupta, and he's joined by his twin sister, Dunvee. Welcome, everybody. Taryn is respected school leader and has helped create a positive and supportive atmosphere for all TAB students. For example, Taryn served as the head drum major for the Competitive Marching Band this year, demonstrating strong leadership throughout the entire marching season. He is also president of the Model UN Club, responsible for helping delegates prepare for multi-level conventions, and is president of the Student Ambassadors, a select group that helps welcome and transition new students to TAB High School. Outside of school, Taryn is heavily involved in community service and volunteering at Riverside Hospital and at several COVID vaccination sites. In the classroom, Taryn is near the top of his class while completing all the requirements for the YCSD honors program with no grade less than an A. His transcript will include 11 Advanced Placement courses, and he has been named a National Merit Commended Student. Taryn excels in many things, and he is willing to share his talents. He works very hard at school and for or on behalf of his classmates. He is generous with his time as a peer tutor, and he can be relied upon to help regardless of the situation. Taryn makes TAB a better place on a daily basis. He is always cheerful and always does so in an efficient manner. We are lucky to have him, and we are so proud to present Taryn as the November Senior of the Month. Thank you for your leadership spirit and wonderful personal example. Thanks, Taryn.
And Ms. Garaltz will share with us about the York High School Senior of the Month.
It is my pleasure to honor Julia Skinner as the November Senior of the Month for York High School. Proud parents, Brian and Candy, if you would stand. York High School is pleased to announce Julia Skinner as our November Senior of the Month. Julia is a caring and hard-working student. She has excelled academically throughout her time at York High School and has done well in the International Baccalaureate Program. Due to her academic success, she holds membership in Mu Alphatheta, National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and the Art Honor Society. Julia has also received recognition from the College Board as an AP Scholar and AP Scholar with Distinction. Julia is a talented athlete and heavily involved in the York High School community. Julia has competed on the York High School Junior Varsity and Varsity Girls Field Hockey Team. In 2018, she served as the Junior Varsity Field Hockey Captain and currently serves as the Varsity Field Hockey Captain. In 2019, she helped her team win Second Team All-State and First Team All-Region. In 2018, Julia received the Junior Varsity Coaches Award and was recognized as the 2019 Best Offensive Player. Julia has been actively involved in the Student Council Association since her 9th-grade year. She's held a leadership role as a Student Council Association Class Representative and Student Council Association Secretary. Julia is currently leading the Green Team as president. Congratulations, Julia, on being selected Senior of the Month for November. We're proud of you.
Next up for our awards and recognitions are Student Service Awards. Dr. Shandor's coming down front, and Mr. Richardson will share with us about our first Student Service Award from Waller Mill Elementary School.
And our first Student Service Award goes to Brooklyn Schultz, if she could come up with Ms. Hopkins, the principal. Waller Mill Elementary would like to acknowledge Brooklyn Schultz as the Student Service Award winner this month. Brooklyn serves her friends, school, and community in many ways. In school, Brooklyn is always willing to lend a hand to help her fellow classmates and offer a listening ear. Every morning, she spends the time tutoring grades 3 and 4 in the Math Buddies Program. She shares her knowledge with our younger students with patience and understanding to help them build stronger math skills. Brooklyn serves her community in multiple ways as well. She helps keep our earth clean by picking up trash on beaches and lakes. Her kind heart has prompted her to give food to the homeless because, in her words, "I like to see their smile." Brooklyn donates her time and effort in many ways to earn money to donate back to the community. She gave money she earned doing yard work and donated it to a church. Her compassion also extends to animals. At the summer, she sold lemonade and cookies around her neighborhood and donated the money to the Humane Society. Our community is a better place for her efforts to keep it clean, to take care of those in need, both human and an animal. Brooklyn embodies the spirit of the Student Service Award through her compassion, willingness to donate her time and resources, and service heart. Waller Mill is lucky to have her as one of our shining stars. Congratulations.
Next, Ms. Garaltz will share with us about the Student Service Award from Yorktown Middle.
Absolutely. Would McKenna Firdan come on up with Mr. Meadows? McKenna Firdan, an 8th grader at Yorktown Middle School, is described as willing to do anything she can to help. She's focused and determined when it comes to her classwork and volunteering, even when challenging. McKenna has a positive attitude, is helpful with her peers, and goes above and beyond with assignments and opportunities to volunteer. McKenna has been an active member of the Youth Volunteer Corps at Yorktown Middle since 6th grade. During her 7th grade year, she served as secretary treasurer and currently serves as president. McKenna is a YMS cheerleader and volunteers at Waters Edge Church. During the 2020-2021 school year, McKenna actively sought ways to volunteer despite the obstacles faced due to virtual learning and social distancing. McKenna created thank-you cards for YMS staff and the York Pacosa Sheriff's Department, and welcome cards for YMS 6th graders, adding a personalized touch to each card. She also participated in the annual YMS canned food drive, canned structure contest, and along with her team, placed as the top middle school in the spring 2021 competition. McKenna was also instrumental in hosting an egg hunt to provide an outdoor socially-distanced activity for pre-K through elementary-age students. McKenna has participated in the YMS Coat Drive and Holiday Graham fundraiser, which raised approximately $500 to support the Peninsula Food Bank, Natasha House, and Children's Hospital of the King's Daughters. She has also been a Girl Scout from kindergarten through 6th grade. Yorktown Middle is proud to recognize McKenna for this month's Student Service Award. Congratulations, McKenna.
Next, we have our Community Volunteers of the Month, and Mr. Myatt will share with us about the Community Volunteer Award winner from Waller Mill.
Yeah, Mrs. Lindsay Falls is not able to join us this evening, but we'd like to acknowledge, again, her contributions to Waller Mill Elementary, and I think we'll hold on reading till next month, yes?
Okay, sure. So, we'll move on to Yorktown Middle School. Ms. Garaltz will share with us about this award winner.
Absolutely. Would Ms. Ashley Smith come on up with Mr. Meadows?
It is with great pleasure that I present Ms. Ashley Smith as the Volunteer of the Month from Yorktown Middle School. Mrs. Smith is a respected member of the YMS family and is involved in all areas of our school community. She took on a number of volunteering projects as we prepared for the 2020-21, 2022 school year, and in an age where the demands of life pull us in different directions, Mrs. Smith continually makes time to support the staff, students, and community at York Middle School. Mrs. Smith's commitment to Yorktown Middle School this year has proven to be invaluable. To help welcome back the staff, Mrs. Smith spearheaded the makeover of the YMS teacher's lounge. This was no small task. For this project, she and other volunteers created signs, painted walls, and even built furniture as a way to provide a positive and inviting space for staff to use throughout the school year. While this project was happening, she worked with her board and other parent volunteers to organize activities during open house and the days leading up to the start of school. She led the way for membership drives and helped to outfit families with spirit wear. Not only does Mrs. Smith have a can-do attitude about volunteerism, but she also used her position as the PTSA president to put forward ideas about advocacy and community support. While planning for the school year, Mrs. Smith collaborated with the PTSA Board and the YMS Guidance Department to develop topics for parent universities as a way to inform and educate families on topics relevant to middle school. These topics were included in the YMS Family Engagement Survey, and the results will be used to guide that work throughout the school year. Did I mention that Mrs. Smith is a long-term substitute for YMS? Amidst her work with the PTSA, Mrs. Smith committed to a long-term subposition during the opening weeks of the school year. In this role, she collaborates with teachers and staff to support our returning students in the classroom and around campus. Whether it is organizing a membership drive to help put the Student and Parent-Teacher-Student Association, submitting announcements to promote participation in the annual PTA reflection contests, or encouraging her husband to submit a YCSD substitute application, Mrs. Smith is a significant asset to Yorktown Middle School community and is deserving of this recognition. She is patient, she is caring, she serves our students and staff, and embraces each volunteer opportunity with passion. We are honored to have her as our Volunteer of the Month. Congratulations, Ashley.
I believe we're bringing all of the people back up for the York Foundation for Public Education presentation. I believe, Ms. Garaltz, you have some information to share as we welcome all of our recipients back up.
Absolutely. Would our student... Yeah, our Student Service Award winners, would you come back up, our volunteers?
And our pledge leader.
And our pledge leader. Usually, this is Mark Senior and our Seniors of the Month. Would you guys come up to the front for us so we can... Ms. Christina Head, York Foundation for Public Education member, is assisting us this evening as we recognize these award recipients. Congratulations to Xavier Ward, 4th grader from Waller Mill Elementary, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients. Yeah, everybody stay up here because we're going to have photo ops. Brooklyn Schultz from Waller Mill Elementary School and McKenna Firdan from York Middle School. We'd also like to recognize our four Senior of the Month Award recipients: Faith from Bruton High School, Talia from Grafton High School, Taryn Gupta from TAB High School, and Julia Skinner from York High School. Also, Grafton High School's October Senior of the Month, Ben Madrigal, is attending this evening. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweets are being presented tonight on behalf of the York Foundation in partnership with their donor, Jeannie Faoka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being presented to each award recipient on behalf of a foundation supporter. Thank you, guys. Does everybody get their photos?
Next on our agenda is an introduction of some new staff. Dr. Shandor, would you like to share some additional remarks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. I would like to introduce Ms. Jill Gillikin, the new assistant principal at Mount Vernon Elementary School. If she'll please stand. Since 2019, Ms. Gillikin has served as an Assessment Compliance and Intervention Coordinator at Mount Vernon Elementary School. Previously, she served as an ACI at Coventry Elementary and as an elementary teacher and team leader in Williamsburg, James City County, and Franklin Public Schools. We want to officially congratulate Ms. Gillikin as she transitions into her new role. Congratulations.
Next, we have our Accent on Academics. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, and good evening, board members. Tonight's Accent on Academics presentation will be Number Talks. Number Talks are short, purposeful math discussions that enhance students' ability to comfortably problem-solve, reason, and respectively communicate their thinking using appropriate math strategies. To share more about the project is Ms. Mary Lugo, principal of TAB Elementary School. Ms. Lugo.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Shandor, Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, and York County School Division community. I am excited to have the opportunity for our students to share the importance of Number Talks with you this evening. The Virginia Department of Education suggests that Number Talks should be done frequently to help children develop flexibility in their thinking about numbers. Our York County School Division mathematics model calls for Number Talks to be a 5- to 10-minute daily routine that helps students develop number sense and computational fluency in a safe environment where students are encouraged to take risks. Tonight, we are going to ask you to take a risk as well and work to participate in the Number Talk with them. To give you more information, I welcome one of our 3rd-grade teachers, Mrs. April Dawson, to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us tonight. So, there are many reasons why we actually love Number Talks. They help the students embrace and grow from mistakes, as well as giving them opportunities for real-world application. Most importantly, Number Talks helps to grow brave mathematicians. Now, to prepare our audience for our presentation, we would like to share a few hand signals. So, this means me, too. So, when you see the kids doing this, me, too. And also, if I have one strategy to solve a problem, I would go like this, and if I have two strategies to solve a problem, I would go like this. So, that way, when you see them, you'll know. So, there are a few questions that help guide Number Talks in the classroom. For example, who would like to share their answer or their thinking? Do you agree or disagree? As well as, who solved it in another way? So, we will be presenting a slightly shorter version of Number Talks this evening with you. And so, now we have Ms. Diane Turner to speak.
Another piece to our Number Talks routine is respectful conversation. Our students are encouraged to use sentence stems to support collaboration and communication during the process. During Number Talks, a student might provide an incorrect answer or a repeat of their strategy that isn't mathematically accurate. When this happens, our students may use respectful conversations by saying, "I respectfully disagree with Mrs. Turner. 2 plus 4 is not 60. I think you meant to say 2 tens plus 4 tens is 60." Students may also add to another... onto another classmate's strategy by saying, "I can add to that by..." This talk also encourages students to use mathematical vocabulary. For example, "I really like how you use your place-values and partial-product strategy to help you find the answer. I use the same strategy." At this time, I would like to invite our 3rd graders Zoe, Dylan, Ava, and Cody onto the stage as we demonstrate a shortened version of our Number Talks routine.
Okay, at this time, we are going to start our think time for our problem today, 500 minus 187. Let's see, Dylan, or let's see, Zoe, what is the answer? What do you think the answer is this evening?
I think the answer is 313.
Oh, okay, looks like we all agree. All right. So, let's go ahead and talk about some strategies. Dylan, would you mind sharing your strategy first?
My strategy is the minus 1 plus 1 strategy.
You can look over to her, see if it's here, right here, buddy.
So, I start by minusing 1 from 500, which makes it 499. And I know 9 minus 7 is 2. And 9 minus 8 is 1. And 4 minus 1 is 3. Since I took 1 away at the beginning, now I have to add 1. 312 plus 1 is 313.
That was fabulous, Dylan, great job. Okay, so, do you have anyone else who'd like to share a strategy? All right, let's see. Ava, how did you solve the strategy? How did you solve the problem?
I did the break-apart strategy, which is where I took 500 minus 100 equals 400. And then 400 minus 80 is 320. And 320 minus 7 is 313. That's how I got my answer.
Just like me from Zoe. Okay, so, Zoe, I see you're agreeing with Ava.
I did the break-apart strategy where I broke up 187 into 187.
That's great. All right, now, Cody, did you do a different strategy? Fabulous. Would you like to share?
My strategy was the counting up. I took 3 and added it to 187, which would give me 190, and then I would add a 10 to 190, which would give me 200, and then I would add 300 to 200, which would give me 500, and then I'd add 310 and 3, which would give me 313.
That's amazing. Great job, Cody. Now, are there any strategies that any of you would like to share that our students did not share? Yes, sir. Dr. Shandor.
I just listened to Zoe. She gave a great answer. I had the Cody strategy, that's how I'm...
I would have used my calculator.
We were afraid that that might have been what some of you guys would have done, yeah. Okay.
In closing, we would like to present a short video of former 3rd graders who have a few things to say and share how Number Talks has helped them grow as mathematicians.
Hi, my name is Susina, and I'm a 4th grader here at Tawley Elementary. Number Talks helped me communicate more with other students. I was able to use multiple strategies to help me figure out the answer. And Number Talks allowed me to figure out how my brain worked different from theirs when doing math.
Hello, my name is Luca Andrich. I am a 4th grader at TAB Elementary School, and this is what I think of the idea of Number Talks. It has made me a better mathematician, and it has helped me with processing numbers in my head, and I still use it today by simplifying problems by breaking into parts.
Hi, I'm Siya, 4th grader here at TAB Elementary. And Number Talks is an amazing addition to my life. You can use Number Talks in so many places. Some places you can use it at are the grocery store, the shopping mall, and even at your house. Number Talks will always help you in the future.
Hello, my name is Destiny, and I'm a 4th grader here at TAB Elementary School. Number Talks helped me to do math equations faster and quicker in my head. It felt great to just hear other students' ideas and strategies, so that helped me make up my own strategies.
My name is Alexander Ferguson. I'm from TAB Elementary. This is what I think of Number Talk. Number Talk has made me a better mathematician by giving me a way to solve problems. Even now, I use Number Talk to simplify problems.
My name is Kendall Anamai. I am a student here at TAB Elementary School. Number Talks made me a better mathematician because we used to do 4th grade problems in 3rd grade, which helped me prepare for now. I use them today in tests solving problems and in life.
Here and presenting our Number Talks routine with you guys.
Yes. And are there any questions before we let the kids leave?
Well, just actually for the teachers here, and a comment as well. We're able to go into the classroom on occasion and visit and see as school board members, but it's great to be able to see the children here to show the community, the classroom. That's basically what you did tonight. It was great. It was wonderful. So, when you're teaching the strategies, do you teach the strategies all at one time in one day, or do you start with one strategy and then move to the next?
So, you'd be quite surprised that there are very few strategies that we directly teach. How it normally works is the kids will come up with the strategies. They share them, and all it takes is, for example, Ava to say, this is her strategy, and she would write it down, and then the next person says, "Oh, I like how you..." It was a very shortened version, so they'll say, "Ava, I like how you broke it apart into hundreds, tens, and ones." And so, then the next day, Cody would then try Ava's strategy when he raised his hand. Or, for example, the minus 1 plus 1. They would try that, and they just really like, when Destiny was saying, "I like to see what other people do," so it helps me think the way... helps me understand how I'm thinking. That really is how it works in class. So, yeah.
And one last question for the kids. Is math fun? Yeah, I bet it is. I bet it is.
I think so, too.
Sounds like it. Wonderful, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I was just going to ask a question of the kids before you leave. So, when you're doing math, whether at home or at school, are there times where you try a strategy that you normally use, but then you have to think about another student in your class who uses a different one, and you kind of switch your strategy when you're doing homework?
So, a lot of times, people do the break-apart strategy, and so, it helps me come up with other strategies that I have to do. Because I love to participate in Number Talks.
You've got some good salespeople here. You've got some good salespeople here. Thank you, guys.
That was lights out, thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
All right, great, thank you for having us.
We are gonna take just a very short recess here, so we have a chance to meet and congratulate all of tonight's award recipients. We will be back in just a few minutes. I now call the meeting back to order, and we will start our business portion of our meeting. Uh, we start off with unfinished business, uh, but we have none, so we'll move right on to our presentations. Our first presentation is an operational update, as we always receive. Dr. Shandor.
Excuse me, thank you, Ms. Higginbotham, board members. Dr. Carroll, our chief operations officer, will now present your monthly operation report. Dr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, here is your operational update. So, first of all, as usual, we'll start with the locality metrics, and we continue to see a fall from the fourth wave. Uh, we did actually experience a couple of days in moderate transmission before bouncing back up into the lower end of substantial. Um, this data was collected, uh, today, and we stood at 81.2 per 100,000 as far as cases. So, a big improvement, but you are seeing a little bounce back, and that's coming before the holidays. So, we'll see where that takes us. And as usual, as we look at our dashboard, our cases continue to mirror the community transmission. So, whereas 10 days ago, we were down to as low as three positive cases, we were up to 11 this morning before collecting the cases from the weekend. So, we should be somewhere in the teens as we go through this week. And also, as usual, uh, the quarantines are related to that. So, we were at 43 quarantines this morning. So, when you add those with the positive cases, we're looking at 54 isolations and quarantines to start the week. Uh, like I said, a big improvement over a few weeks ago, but, uh, still affecting students and their achievements. Um, so then, we get into vaccination rates, and I actually have some new data for you. VDH started reporting between our last meeting and this meeting, uh, they started reporting out on the five to 11 age group. And they've gotten off to a pretty good start there. So, you can see that the five to elevens are now just short of 15% in the county. And you can see that the 12 to 15s are up to just about 56% for their first dose, and 47% are fully vaccinated. The 16 to 17-year-old group is now up to 63.2% for their first dose, and 54.2% are fully vaccinated. And when you look at just the entire adult population, we are now approaching 75% with their first dose of vaccination. So, that continues to incrementally improve. Now, our contribution to that was last Friday night. We had, uh, the first of two shot clinics. Uh, the second one will be on December 10th, and that will probably be our last planned shot clinic. And we had 316 attendees, and, uh, we were really happy with elementary. We had 90, uh, pre-register for it, but we had 124 show up and get their first shots. And then, we had 192, and you see adults in quotations, because if it was anybody 12 or up, I got adult doses. And we had some that were first time, uh, 12 to 17-year-olds that got their, uh, first shots. And then, we had a good number of staff members come in to get their booster shots. And then, as far as vaccination and testing news, uh, on November 4th, OSHA did finally drop their guidance on, uh, employee mandatory vaccination. And the next day, a bunch of lawsuits came in, and that kind of, uh, put a stall on that. Uh, a number of states and entities had lawsuits, therefore, those all got packaged together and was awarded to the Sixth Circuit of Appeals. And since then, OSHA has, they, we had a couple deadlines we were supposed to hit in early December and early January. OSHA has now suspended those deadlines pending the court decision. So, we are on hold, we will continue to do some preliminary planning in, in the case that that does, uh, pass through the courts. But, uh, this, this might be a, a long haul here for a little bit. So, um, we're waiting to see where we're at there. And then, my last update for you is transportation, a little bit more of the same. We remain significantly understaffed, however, we keep incrementally adding people. Uh, it still gets, uh, a little better every day. And you'll remember, a few weeks ago, you revised the pay plan to add a retired bus driver rate. So, those, uh, drivers that had retired with us could return at a higher rate than a substitute bus driver. And we actually had our first one start today, so we're glad to have her back. And we've also had another van driver start since our last meeting. And we are continuing to get people in the pipeline. So, we still have three in the hiring, training pipeline, so we continue to improve. There's also been some open positions in the office, uh, that, uh, date back to the summer, and we are about to fill those slots, so that will actually add capacity in the office and make for better operations. So, we're real pleased with, uh, where we're going with transportation and hope that it continues to improve. Uh, that continued, or that, uh, concludes my report, and I'm welcome any questions you have.
Can you remind me, what number is the thing that takes us from moderate to substantial or whatever? Is it the, I think it was 125, is that the number?
The threshold from, uh, to go into high from substantial is 100 cases per 100,000. The substantial down to moderate is at 50, and then, from moderate to low is at 10.
And that's taking just York County, or is it taking...
Well, that's, that's the threshold everywhere, but our York County numbers are the ones I always share with you. So, we're in the, in the low 80s right now.
Okay, thank you.
Which puts us in substantial.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll.
Our next presentation is a staffing update, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham, and Dr. Vladu, our chief human resource officer, will now give you this month's staffing update. Dr. Vladu?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening, Ms. Higginbotham, members on the board, and Dr. Shandor. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a staffing update. I'll begin with licensed positions. So, at the elementary level, we're currently hiring for the following positions. Six special education teachers, two classroom teachers, one pre-K teacher, one school counselor, one R teacher, one English learner teacher, one reading specialist, one library media specialist, and one, uh, early childhood special education teacher. At a secondary level, we are currently hiring for the following positions. Three science teacher, one of which has been filled, two English teachers, two CTE teachers, one special education teacher, one math teacher, one history and social science teacher, one reading specialist, and 1.5 positions were FTEs of encore at the middle school level. Now, to some other licensed positions, uh, this slide represents the summary. First, I'll begin with, uh, five newly budgeted positions, which includes a special education coordinator, one school psychologist, one board certified behavioral, uh, analyst, or assistant behavior analyst, one social worker. And, uh, we also are looking for, uh, one student achievement coach. Additionally, we are looking to hire three speech-language pathologists, one assistant principal, and one social worker. Now, to our non-licensed vacancies or positions. We're hiring for 14 special education payer educators, 17 general education payer educators, and one occupational therapist. As a reminder, as I look at the past several years of data, we average about 30 of these positions throughout the year. So, we're slightly behind, but certainly, we're making progress in that area. Now, to our non-licensed or non-instructional positions, uh, these are many critical positions, as, uh, Dr. Carroll shared, that support the mission of the York County School Division. So, we're still looking for 25 school bus drivers, 18 custodians, three bus assistants, three office clerical, three bus dispatcher positions, two co- crossing guards, two maintenance and warehouse positions, two cafeteria positions, one, uh, unified communications administrator, one programmer analyst, one operations specialist, one RN for our health services, and one computer support technician. So, I know I shared a lot of numbers over the past three months, but I want to put it all in context. Um, as we continue to fill these positions, I compiled the last three months of information as was presented to you in board docs. So, on this, uh, chart, um, resignations and retirements are represented by the blue bars. New hires are represented by the green bars. As you can see, we're making progress. However, every position matters, and every position is critical, and we continue to, uh, work to meet, uh, the needs of our schools. So, we are making progress, and I'm grateful for our hiring managers who continue to work and beat the bushes in getting all of our candidates, uh, to the table, so we could get them onboarded, um, to support our schools. So, some are continuing our action steps, some of you will, you have seen throughout the months. I want to focus on a couple of one. Um, currently, uh, we have several student teachers, uh, in the fall, um, in a placement. Uh, they'll complete this, uh, their fall placement shortly, um, after Thanksgiving break. And it does vary by university. We're working with them, they're well into the process for our qualifying teachers in areas where we have shortages, where we have anticipated vacancies, that we're gonna be working with our qualifying candidates, and, um, you know, making some job offers, uh, shortly after, uh, Thanksgiving. Uh, I want to also focus on a couple of other items on that page. Career switcher programs, we're in process of working with ODU and Regent, and we're looking for other universities, but at this time, they have well-established programs. Uh, and we're looking, uh, in developing programs for, not only for our teachers, uh, and actually, for our staff members in YCSD, but also for York County residents. Uh, some more information on that will be coming. Lastly, uh, we want to work with our, uh, military. Uh, we are one of the largest, uh, military-supporting, uh, school divisions in the state of the nation. And many military, um, personnel that have a sense of service to this country, then when they get out, they're looking for jobs. So, we're gonna be, um, developing some programs in that area. Again, it's too early to give you the specifics, but I'll be coming to you and share that information over the coming months. So, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide these updates. At this time, I will take any questions that you might have.
So, Dr. Vladu, just really quickly, before the board asks questions, if I was in the community and I was trying to get, um, a job in YCSD, who do I contact?
Uh, you can contact us directly or go online and apply, because as soon as you apply, we're monitoring that information every single day, several times a day. So, go ahead and apply, and if you give us a call, send us your resume. But you can call the Human Resources Department, that information is available on the webpage.
Thank you. So, just one question on the, uh, application process. Our application program, is that a separate program we have? Is that connected, like, to our MUNIS program or some other program we use?
We are, have several programs that do different things. So, this pro- application program has been, um, in use for, um, a while. So, we have quite a few candidates in there, but it is a separate program that integrates with the other system, but it is a standalone program.
It, okay, standalone. I just asked that because I, I know I had someone use me as a reference, and I got it while I was out of town, and tried to do it on my phone, it's not very user-friendly on the cellphone. Um, but, uh, that's just because of the type of program it is. But that's why I asked.
And we are looking at making improvements to it.
Okay, great, wonderful, thank you.
I know, one of my, uh, questions is all the time, but, um, for payer educators, are we kind of investigating as to why it's so hard to find them? And are we looking at, um, changing compensation there, like we did for bus drivers, uh, to make it easier for us to find folks?
We do periodic reviews of our comparative market, and that's one area that we did look at. But there are many, many factors in, um, in staffing, and compensation is one of those many factors. Uh, we met with several of our payer educators to hear from them about what their concerns are, but it's not compensation alone, it's one of the factors. It is an area of need. When we averaged 30 for the past five years, we know that even before the pandemic, this was an area. And, um, we'll continue to evaluate that we are within, the last review for compensation, we are within 5% of midpoint, which is among our comparative market here in the Hampton Roads region.
My, my concern is that we're in a different space than we used to be. We're utilizing our payer educators in a different manner, uh, than we used to. And so, I'm just wondering if we add that to our consideration as far as compensation is concerned. I know they're getting pulled all different directions, covering for classes and things like that, whereas before, they might not have been used that way.
Yeah, that, that's something that we heard in the, that we've heard in the feedback, and we anticipate hearing, um, in the feedback related to developing our budget this year.
Okay, great, thank you.
I know, I believe, last week or the week before, we had a, a job fair, uh, at Grafton, I think. And I was just curious how, how that went, how many people we had come through.
Thank you for that question, it was on November 3rd, and we had, uh, when we have, have these things, we try to hold them at both ends of the county. We know that, uh, some folks are reluctant to travel. Um, so, we headed to McGruder Elementary in the morning, and we're there for half a day. Then, we finished the day, um, at Grafton, um, Grafton School Complex, which is sort of central for this area of the county. Um, so, certainly, we are very, very grateful, uh, however, the turnout, despite our advertisement on social media, um, and just about every other venue on the website, um, we had eight, um, folks stop by. Uh, that's indicative of the job market out there. And as you saw in the previous number, we're making, um, we're making gains in hiring, but it's not easy. So, again, I can't thank my department enough, um, as well as our principals and our hiring supervisor for continuing to make progress in that area.
Great, and it's nice to hear the, um, working on the student teachers to, to start to pull them in, you know, a little bit, a little bit quicker for the following year.
Certainly, and we have also identified, uh, spring, um, and then, we're gonna work with, with those folks, and we developed a process, uh, in order to do that, not just this year, but every year.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the, the challenge isn't going away, as we know. Um, we're gonna have to grow our own. And then, the other pieces, I like the idea with regard, as you know, there are now unique or different military programs where they can transition before full retirement, um, if we're prepared to receive them. Um, I'm glad that's moving up on the list, too. We're gonna have to, as you're, Dr. Vladu, as you know, and the team knows, get very creative, um, over the coming years, certainly.
Sure. Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vladu.
Next, we have, uh, comments from citizens in our public participation at board meetings, and we have two opportunities to speak this evening. The first is for general topics, and the second is specifically relating to comments regarding the capital improvements program and the operating budget. Uh, before I open up, uh, our public comments, I will share just a few remarks. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board, and we expect that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students, how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. And we ask that speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual member, superintendent, staff member, or audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and you may speak for up to three minutes. A timer is visible to the speakers from the podium, and the speaker should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on, and the timer will not begin until after you state your name and address. We are providing individual sign-up sheets and pens for each speaker, and we ask that you speak loudly, as the safety shield may muffle your voice. And I would like to open up our public participation for comments of citizens. And for our first topic, for general, uh, comments, we have one person signed up. Pam Puchow, if you want to come up. And if you state your name and address, the timer will begin after that.
I would prefer not to use my home address, because there have been threats made. I'm a resident of York County.
Can you just say the, uh, district that you live in?
Uh, District 4.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Pam Puchow. Trump said, "Real power is fear. I bring rage out, I always have. I don't know if that's an asset or a liability, but whatever it is, I do." Joseph Goebbels, Nazi minister of propaganda, said, "Repeat a lie often enough, and it becomes the truth." Half-truths and outright lies are promoted by social media and politicians to the ignorant, naive, gullible, and alienated. Create a fear, stoke rage, and tell them to go on the offensive. One year ago, only academics had heard of CRT, a program offered to adult law students. CRT is an academic framework for analyzing historical patterns of racism and how they persist economically and socially. It is not taught in K through 12. Even though, even if it were to be taught in the future to age-appropriate grades, why is this so appurient? Walt Zerimba's concerns are unfounded. He has swallowed the Kool-Aid every last drop. His resolution threatening to defund the school's academic budget if his paranoia is not satisfied is ridiculous. Code of Virginia 22.1-97 deals with procedure if locality fails to appropriate sufficient educational funds. When I attended the November 16th Board of Supervisors meeting, the citizens speaking to support Zerimba's resolution also had concerns about transgender students. This issue has been settled in GRIMV Gloucester County School Board. That lawsuit cost Gloucester 1.3 million in damages plus court costs. There was mention of book banning. These same parents give their children smartphones and access to internet, cable TV... These same parents give their children smartphones and access to internet, cable TV, and streaming services. Their kids are exposed to all sorts of X-rated adult material and violence without parental control or apparent concern. If parents are so concerned about what is in the school library, why don't they tell their kids they are free to read whatever they want, but the parents will also read it and follow up with the discussion of the material? In the original version of this resolution, and I understand there are several versions, Zerimba is against creating social justice warriors. This term is considered a left-wing ideology that includes supporting feminism, civil rights, gay and transgender rights, and multiculturalism. I guess equal rights for all is a pejorative concept never to be taught to our children. Who knew? Parents have the right to be involved in their child's education. Parents are welcome to join division and school-based committees, attend board meetings, volunteer, meet with teachers and staff to air their concerns. They do not have the right to micromanage the curricula or impose their personal beliefs on any other student. There is a virus invading America, and I am not talking about COVID. Its symptoms include denial of truth, reality-based information, and empathy. The symptoms express themselves in full-blown conspiracies, unfounded fear and rage, and the adoption of ignorance as the new norm. There is nothing to negotiate with the supervisors. They do not have the legal authority to dictate curricula nor withhold funding. Teach our children their history, no matter how disturbing.
Thank you, Ms. Puchow.
One sentence. Teach them to care about others who are different. Show them how to be better citizens. Do not give into hysteria. And if I could just give you these two copies of the...
Code section?
Code section.
Thank you very much. I now close the public participation for comments of citizens, and I open up our public forum for goals and objectives of the capital improvement program and operating budget. But before we call those people up, Dr. Shandor, do you have any comments?
Yeah, someone asked Mr. Bowen, if he'll please come to the podium. Mr. Bowen is our chief financial officer. He has a few comments related to the capital improvement program. Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board. This evening, we invite the public to share their input and their priorities as we work on our FY23 capital improvements program and also our FY23 operating budget. At the work session earlier this month, Dr. Carroll and Mr. Shearhart presented the six-year facilities master plan, and that is the document that we used to prepare the superintendent's proposed capital improvements plan, and that will be presented at the work session in December. On the budget side, the FY23 budget is the first year of what is the biennium budget, so the General Assembly will be considering a two-year budget this coming session. This will be a long session of the General Assembly. There are several things that occur prior to the release of the governor's budget. The first is the re-benchmarking of education costs. And so this is where the state looks at the increases or changes in costs to things like salaries and benefits and materials and supplies, transportation, and there's even a factor in there for inflation. And so they're going through that process right now. Historically, what we typically see with the re-benchmarking process, increased cost in the neighborhood of 400 million to a half, maybe a little over a half a billion dollars. We may see that come out as a result of the state's formula, but it doesn't mean that the state will fund it. Generally, what they fund is what they can afford. The good thing about this year is we're hearing that there is a lot of money enrichment. So we're very optimistic. There's a lot of stimulus, federal stimulus dollars that have yet to be appropriated to school division, excuse me, to school division. So we're very excited and very optimistic that this may be a very good year for us as far as budget. The second thing that occurs is the Virginia retirement system, the Board of Trustees look at the current rates that employers pay on behalf of their employees. This action has already been completed. The Board of Trustees actually voted to adopt a rate lower than what we're currently paying. It's currently, it's about a 1% rate for our professional employees and teachers. So that's a good thing. That's going to, that's going to save us some money. We'll lose a little bit of revenue on the state side because the state funds that, but we'll also gain money in our budget that's allocated from that 1%, and so we'll see some additional savings there. We'll know more about that when we present an update to you in January. And then the last thing that occurs that's significant to our budget is an update to the local composite index. And this index is a rate that's applied to each locality, and it determines the wealth of the community and how much that community can afford to pay for their share of the cost of education. Just this morning, we received the update on that. Our local composite index is going down 1.13%, which means that the state's going to pick up a higher share of the cost of education for York County. So this could be significant for us. What will ultimately be the determining factor is where we land with enrollment. If our enrollment comes back to the expected level pre-pandemic of more than 13,000, this should have a significant impact on us. Otherwise, what this will do, it will help bridge the gap in the loss of revenue that we could see because we've lost students. We don't know where the state's going to fall as far as extending the hold harmless on the enrollment loss. We'll know more about that when the governor releases his budget and as that budget works through the General Assembly. So that's my update here on the capital improvements plan and the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you. So now I'll call forward our speakers for the public forum on goals and objectives of the capital improvement program and operating budget. Our first speaker is Ashley Smith.
Hi, my name is Ashley Smith, and I reside at 202 Meadowfield Road in Yorktown, Virginia, 23692. Forgive me, my notes have died, so if I sound a little wild, I apologize. I'm Dr. Shandor, members of the board, executive leadership team, and community. As you develop your facilities master plan and your operating budget, and especially that six-year plan, first, let me say that I recognize that our buildings are old friends. They're very old, and our, only our stewardship from YCSD has allowed us to weather some of the storms we've weathered, especially in the pandemic, as well as we have. Things have gone much more smoothly than they might have otherwise gone. However, as you develop those plans, I would ask that you consider our students with disabilities and creating accessible spaces for them on the front end rather than the back end. When we talk about accessible spaces, a lot of times we think about how wide our hallways are and those ADA compliant things, but we would also like to see that every one of our elementary schools have an accessible playground. Right now, our students with limited mobility cannot easily access all of our playgrounds. We would, I personally would love to see communication boards at our elementary school playgrounds that would allow our students who are maybe nonverbal or struggle with communication be able to fully play with our students that are more neurotypical, and so we could make our play more inclusive than we have in the past. Little things like that help our students with disabilities and their families be seen and feel like a valued equal member of our school community. I would also strongly encourage, I know you already do, but I would continue to encourage you to work with Dr. Gould and the Student Services Team about what those facilities would look like. Bring in OT in. What would that space look like if she was going to use it? If she could develop her dream space to work with those students? And finally, I would ask that if we're building sensory or quiet spaces for our students, that we consider access, privacy, and dignity of the students that are trying to access them as you develop those plans going forward. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carol Bauer.
Chairman Higginbotham, members of the school board, my name is Carol Bauer. I reside at 410 Lakeside Drive. Budgets. As you prepare next year's budget, I implore you to consider the employees that have been loyal to York County. This year, we incurred what we call a loyalty penalty. We lost half a year of step, which impacted not only our retirement, but our lifetime earnings. I know compensation has been one of your priorities, but you must find the money and the funding to do even more. Virginia teachers are more than $7,000 under the national average. If you take out Northern Virginia and you just compare York County to the national average, it's even more apparent that we need to raise teacher salaries. Not only do teacher salaries need to increase, we need to talk about our education support professionals. Our custodians have done so much during this pandemic. You heard tonight that we have 18 fewer custodians than we need to have. That's almost one custodian per building. Yet these custodians have maintained our schools, and they've put themselves in harm's ways during this pandemic. Our clerical staff, our clerical staff have gone above and beyond during these last two years. They've had to keep track of tracing. They've done issuing devices. They've been the interface between the public and a lot of the policies. We thank our clerical staff, and they certainly deserve recognition of the hard work that they've done. We've heard a lot about bus drivers, and I know we've already addressed bus drivers, but we need to continue to address bus drivers and funding the compensation for bus drivers. And Ms. Garaltz, you're exactly right. Our parent educators have gone above and beyond this year and last year. They play a critical role in supporting our students and our teachers, so taking a look of how we compensate our parent educators is critical. I've also brought a couple of articles. Dr. Vladu said compensation is not the only thing, and he's exactly right. Here are some articles that have been printed in the last few weeks. This Year is Like No Other for Schools. How Staff Shortages Are Crushing Schools. And then A Radical Approach to Student Mental Health is to Offer Therapy to Teachers. I will tell you, these are real problems. We need to consider how we are supporting our teachers. We have a lot of extra duties that are falling on teachers because we do have staff shortages. So I encourage you not only to look at compensation, but look at other ways that we can support our staff. Thank you very much.
Those are the only signup sheets I have for public comment. So I now close the public participation for comments from citizens. It's just, it's just one time per meeting, I believe, right? Yeah, we can only sign up for one time per meeting.
Well, we're also, if you're open to anybody, you know, not...
Ms. Barry?
Our policy denotes one time per meeting.
We're not, we're listening to her right now.
Our policy, you can allow it at the end of the meeting, like you always do for people who haven't signed up, but our policy does say one time per meeting.
I don't have a problem since it's a separate topic.
Now or?
Now.
At the end?
Yeah.
Okay, if you'd like to come up, you can speak now on the goals and objectives for the capital improvements and program and operating budget.
I honestly did not have a plan to speak, but when I was listening to something, it reminded me. The York County School Division, as many school divisions, has always given a percentage raise. What this does is give the people, the top earners, a decent raise. Unfortunately, the people at the bottom only get a pittance. They never quite catch up, and all it does is spread the divide every year. I would love to see a dollar amount rather than a percentage. And one other thing, and I'm thinking more of elementary schools, but we have children that have ADHD, that are autistic, that have oppositional defiance disorder, and are disruptive in the classrooms. When that occurs, I wish every elementary school would have a very small room with cameras that is a very soft padded room so a child can't harm themselves, to let them sit down and get a chance to get themselves under control without being fussed at, without disturbing their own classroom, where they just go out and have a quiet time. It may be five minutes, it may be 20 minutes or a half hour, but then they're ready to go back and learn and not disrupt the classroom. And I really think every elementary school should have that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. So I now close the participation of comments from citizens. Can we move on to our next portion of our agenda, which is matters by board members? I'll start with Mr. May.
Oh, sure. As we all know, it's extremely busy in the fall as we lead up to winter. I've got a couple of events I want to share that I attended within the, or since the last meeting. The English learner family night that was hosted for English learners and their families was an open house at the Grafton School Complex, held outdoors there, and we had a number of administrators, obviously nearly 200 families, English learning families, so it was well, well-attended, and that included external stakeholders from the community that provide support for our English learning families as well as families in need. It was absolutely dynamite, had an opportunity to share with families and their students in the cafeteria as they broke for a little bit of dinner. And as you can imagine, it's a closely knit group, and they very much enjoyed sharing together, and I had an opportunity to visit with the external stakeholders, too, and the kind of support that they offer already are inclined to offer should we need those resources. So it was very, very well done, so hats off to the, to the school division. Also attended the Engaged in YCSD Partner Appreciation Night at Bailey Field. Again, a reminder to the community, Engaged in is a YSD program that connects interested parents, community members, and businesses with the schools to enhance the career connections and career technical education programs offered within the county. And again, had an opportunity to share with numerous partners who brought guests. It's an opportunity to network. It's an opportunity to exchange ideas. And we frankly transitioned from an excellent barbecue right to the next event, which was the band showcase competition, which was lights out. I don't have the honor of being a band parent, but I fully appreciate that frankly, that is the ultimate team sport. I admire the dedication skill of our student musicians and the unwavering commitment of our band parents and school directors and staff, and they came together towards the latter part of the evening as a collective. And again, that was a wonderful experience and dovetailed very nicely with the Engaged in tailgate evening we hosted. And then finally, I observed the second phase of three-part training for the incident response and management training to the division leadership hosted by the York-Pococin Sheriff's Office, again, attended by about 20 leaders. We crossed the division, multiple functional areas, and the scenario was, included realistic time face scenario requiring inputs from across the division. It escalated in complexity, and it was very, very well done as we seek to increase preparedness across division leadership and integrate with the York-Pococin Sheriff as well as fire and life safety. So again, very, very well done. So, thank you.
Ms. Garaltz.
So again, I just want to wish Mr. Schaefer well, if he's watching this evening. We hope you get well soon. I got to deliver the senior signs again today. That is definitely a highlight of my month, but we've just discussing that every single time I do it, it's raining. So I'm hoping that in December, it's not that way. So it's just a great highlight to drive up to somebody's house and leave something that when the kids get home, they're taking a picture and sharing with their parents. So that's just a great, a great positive. Got to participate in some more mock interviews at York River Academy. Just a great experience. The kids were very, very, very well-prepared, bringing their own resumes and just having great conversations. And I kind of use it as an opportunity at the end to ask what they love about YRA, and those answers are always well. Just blow my mind, just different perspectives from those kids. Got to see the band showcase as well, and although I was not a band parent, I'm a band aunt now, and I was just blown away by the entire process, and I would actually call them athletes because I know I could not do even half of what they were doing out there. So I would say they're band and athletes as well. Attended the delegate, delegate assembly last week. It was actually virtual this year, and that's the opportunity that they send one of us to kind of vote on the legislative priorities. And so that was very eye-opening, just to see the things that are going to get pushed forward to the General Assembly. I did vote on our behalf as a board, and again, great conversation there. Also attended the virtual conference, the VSBA conference, and was able to take some training. I know I forwarded each of you some of the materials that we received, I, me attending, but then sharing it with our entire board. So a lot of great law updates and everything. But finally, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving, safe travels to everybody, and just health and wellness for everyone. We return.
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. I'd just like to say that I was out of town last week for, on vacation, but the week before that, before I left, I was able to attend the play at Grafton High School. And boy, do we have some talented students in the county. They did a wonderful job. It was, the play was about Maine and these little one-act plays throughout. It was, it was very good. They did a great job. And it's all student-run. The students did it all. So if you ever want a date night with your wife or your family, take them out to dinner, go to the play. It's a, it's a good night out and good entertainment. But I just want to say with the events happening just locally across the country around the world, tomorrow's never promised, so enjoy your time with your families during this holiday. this holiday season and happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I'd like to add. A few weeks ago, I got to attend an event at Coventry Elementary School. I, I got to see the student dodgeball tournament. It was, it was really nice to see those kids sort of running around, acting like kids again. I saw the third grade. There was a third, fourth, and fifth grade tournament. I saw the third grade tournament there. It was, it was just fun to see them there and it was run really well. So Mr. Gibson, if you're watching or if you're listening, or if somebody can tell Mr. Gibson, the PE teacher there at Coventry Elementary, he did a fantastic job running it, organizing it with, so kids were able to bring, you know, an adult or two adults with them to, to watch. I was hoping, they said if there was time, there would be an adult versus kids at the very end. Unfortunately, we didn't get to that point, but that might be pretty good because my competitive spirit can sometimes get the best of me. But I enjoyed watching the students participate and have fun with that. I also got to see the, I was at the vaccine clinic just this last week. My, my, my youngest son was eligible, so he went and he got his first shot. And I just want to say that it was extremely well-run and organized and well-collaborated between the Williamsburg Drug Company, the York County Fire and Life Safety, and YCSD staff that were running it. It was very smooth with everyone who came in and out. It was a constant flow of people in and out, but it was never crowded. It was never people in the way and it's, it's just really well-done. So I just want to give a kudos for all of that collaboration that went into it. And then again, I want to echo all the other board members' remarks with Thanksgiving coming up. I hope everyone is happy, healthy, and safe, and you're able to take this time to rest and recharge, whether you're a student, a family member, or a teacher. Please take this time and really relax and enjoy the time off so we can sort of get back to the grind here three weeks in December, right after that. So I just hope everyone has a nice relaxing time with their families. And that will close our board matters section, and we'll go right into our financial matters. Ms. Garaltz.
Absolutely. Consideration of Approval of Claims Certified for Payment. We have claims certified for payment for October 2021. Significant expenditures for October. We had payments related to instruction totaled approximately $165,200 and included payments to Capstone Press, Indus Translation Services, IXL Learning, Riverside Insights, and William &amp; Mary. We had payments related to IT totaling $167,825 and included payments to Virticom, Virginia Business Systems, Cox Communications, Inflow Communications, SHI International. Payments for operations and maintenance total $109,900 and included a payment to Virginia Power for Utility Services. We had payments related to food service totaling $449,100 and included payments to Sedexo, Tyson Foods, and payments for administration totaled $34,500 and included a payment to Remind 101 for mobile messaging platform. We had payments related to construction and maintenance projects totaling $227,800 and included payments to Simpson Unlimited, Centennial Contractors, and RRMM Architects. We also had consideration, we have a consideration of approval of financial reports for October 2021. We had significant changes written to the operating budget. For October revenues, our sales tax revenue, state sales tax revenue for FY22 increased by more than $349,500 when compared to October 2020 due to expected economic growth. We had federal revenue for October 2021 increased $135,300 when compared to October 2020 due to unexpected payment for Impact Aid. For expenditures, expenditure for instruction have increased by $6.2 million in October 2021 when compared to October 2020. This was the result of the scheduled pay increase for FY22 and the result of moving the 10-month employee pay schedule up one month earlier in the FY22. Expenditure for transportation, operations, and admin and health have increased $800,000 primarily as a result of a scheduled pay increase for FY22. Technology expenditures for October 2021 have decreased by more than $1.9 million from October of 2020 as a result of the one-to-one program implemented in fiscal year 2020. Significant changes related to the food service budget for revenues and expenditures, federal food service revenue for October 2021 has increased by more than $919,000. This increase is due to timing in which reimbursements have been paid to the School Division. Food service expenditures for October 2021 have increased $353,000 when compared to 20, October 2020 due to increased participation. We also have consideration of approval of Resolution 21-48A, Resolution authorizing a specific procurement. Resolution 21-48 requires the board's approval authorizing procurements of more than $50,000. There are three items on the resolution. Seaford Elementary renovation, a contract increase of $415,180. The A&E for Bruton High School's roof, $149,000 and six, $149,640, $145,640, and two minivans for McKinni Vento Transportation, $61,768. Mr. Chair, I now move to approve financial matters as listed.
A second, a motion.
Are there any questions? All right, Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second. You may pull the board.
Yes, the motion is made by Mrs. Garaltz and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve financial matters as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. Thank you. The vote passed four to zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our consent calendar. We've had the opportunity to go through the items on our consent calendar here, but just a quick reference. We have approval of personnel actions, approval of minutes from our regular meeting on October 25th, 2021, and approval of donations in the amount of $2,150. So we would just need a motion and a second to approve our consent calendars listed.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. We approve the consent calendar as listed.
Second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mrs. Garaltz to approve the consent calendar as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
We do have a few action items this evening. Our first one is a consideration of a motion to approve and to request the Board of Supervisors to approve the transfer to the Revenue Stabilization Reserve Fund of $423,392 in the fiscal year 21, local end-of-year reversion funds created by Impact Aid receipts over the budgeted amount. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Bowen is at the podium. He actually has this item in the next one, so I'll let Mr. Bowen share our comments.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board. Items A and B are both related to end-of-year balances for fiscal year 2021. As you know, our budget has a baseline for Impact Aid of $8.7 million. Receipts, revenues in excess of that $8.7 million are then transferred to the Revenue Stabilization Fund by a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board. So we received in total for the year $9,123,000, $123,392 of Impact Aid revenue. So this, this $432,000 is what we're asking to be transferred to the Revenue Stabilization Fund. And that will bring in total to our Revenue Stabilization Fund in excess of $8.5 million.
Any other questions? All right, so we are in need of a motion and a second to approve the request to the Board of Supervisors to approve the transfer of the Revenue Stabilization Reserve Fund of $423,392 for fiscal year 21, local end-of-year reversion funds created by Impact Aid receipts over the budgeted amount.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second.
Was that Mr. Myatt that seconded it?
It was.
A motion was made by Mrs. Garaltz and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the motion as stated. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
Our next item is a consideration of a motion to request the Board of Supervisors to appropriate to the School Division the fiscal year 21 operating budget, end-of-fiscal year reversion funds, exclusive of the Impact Aid receipts over the revenue budget line item for Impact Aid totaling $828,853 to the Health and Dental Fund. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham. Again, Mr. Bowen will share comments related to this item.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board. This is the remainder of that $1.2 million that we had at the end of the fiscal year. We're asking for those funds, asking for the, for you to approve, requesting the Board of Supervisors to reappropriate those funds back to the School Division so they can be deposited into the Health and Dental Fund.
Any questions? All right, so we are in need of a motion and a second to approve the request to the Board of Supervisors to appropriate to the School Division the fiscal year 21 operating budget, end-of-fiscal year reversion funds, exclusive of Impact Aid receipts over the revenue budget line item for Impact Aid totaling $828,853 to the Health and Dental Fund.
So moved.
A second, a motion.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, a motion was made by Mrs. Garaltz and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the motion as stated. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
Next up, we do not have anything for discussion of policy, so we move to our first reading. And we have a first reading of Policy BCF, which is the Advisory Committees to the School Board. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham. At this time, there's no changes since last month. We'll bring this policy back for a second read next month.
Are there any questions from the board?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to second reading. Our first item for second reading is of Section C, General School Administration of the York County School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor.
There are no further changes.
So we are in need of a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Section C, General School Administration of the York County School Board Policy Manual.
Mr. Chair, moving to approve the second reading of Section C, General School Administration of the York County School Board Policy Manual.
Do we have a second?
Sure, second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Myatt and seconded by Mrs. Garaltz to approve the second reading of Section C. Board members, you may cast your votes. The motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
Our next item is a second reading of revisions to Policy JJAC, the student athlete concussions during extracurricular activities. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. There are no further changes to Policy JJAC.
So we are in need of a motion and a second to approve the second reading of revisions to Policy JJAC, student athlete concussions during extracurricular activities.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for the approval of the revisions to Policy JJAC, student athlete concussions during extracurricular activities.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mrs. Garaltz to approve the second reading of revisions to Policy JJAC. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed four to zero. Thank you.
Next, we have a second reading of the new policy filed JJAD, sudden cardiac arrest in student athletes. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham. Again, there are no further changes to Policy File JJAD.
So we are in need of a motion and a second to approve the second reading of new policy filed JJAD, sudden cardiac arrest in student athletes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the new policy filed JJAD, sudden cardiac arrest of student athletes.
A second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the second reading of the policy filed JJAD. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed about four to zero. Thank you.
And moving on to our next item in our agenda is a report from the superintendent. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, and again, good evening, board members. Just a few items this evening. So our staff continues to have budget discussions, and we had a community virtual budget input session on November 18th and appreciated the dialogue and feedback on a few board members that listened in on that call. This path month has been a busy time of visiting schools and observing the connections between students and teachers in the classroom. I had the opportunity to participate in mock interviews as well at Tab High School, and I really enjoyed interacting with the students and hearing their thoughts, plans, and their visions for the future. So that's always a really wonderful opportunity. If you're in the community and you haven't done that and you have a local business and whatnot, and you have an opportunity to come in and interview our students, it's really a wonderful experience. Also, have been out in various schools presenting Apple Awards. So this is an award that is, staff members can recognize other staff members for outstanding work and well-deserving employees. It's really inspiring to hear about the excellent work being performed in our School Division and so many dedicated individuals serving in a variety of roles. And in closing, I'll echo what the other School Board members shared this evening. I want to extend all of our staff, parents, and students a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving and holiday break. I hope you have an opportunity to spend quality time with your families and friends. Thank you.
So our next work session will be held on Monday, December 6th, downstairs right here at York Hall. We are in need of three closed sessions this evening, so I'm going to ask a board member to please make a motion and a second to take us into our first closed session, which is relating to personnel matters.
I move that the York County School Board convening closed session to discuss personnel matters relating to specific employees pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Garaltz and seconded by Mr. Myatt for the board to meet in closed sessions to discuss personnel matters. Board members, you may cast your vote. Thank you. The motion passed four to zero. You're now in closed session.
I hope all the students and teachers have a wonderful last day at school tomorrow before our Thanksgiving break, and I hope everyone has a great week and wonderful Thanksgiving. We're now in closed session.